City Commission meeting for March 10th will come to order, please. Roll call, City Clerk.
Commissioner Abraham.
Present.
Commissioner Gault.
Present.
Commissioner Rhodes.
Here.
Commissioner Wilson.
Present.
Mayor Kayler.
Present. Tonight, we have Associate Pastor Russ Wilson from First Baptist Church of Paducah to do our invocation. Thank you Pastor Wilson for being here. And our pledge of allegiance tonight will be led by Palmer Stroup. He's a Paducah Tillman High School junior. So if you'll stand for the invocation, please.
Bow with me, please. Our great God, we bow before you tonight and thank you for your love, your mercy, and your grace. And thank you for how awesome you are. You're holy, you're righteous, you're loving. You are truly God. And Lord, we lift up this evening to you. Pray, God, that you're honored and glorified by everything that happens tonight. We thank you for these men that will be sworn in as officers of the law. And God, we pray your protection upon them. God, we thank you for the men and women that have served faithfully for so many years that will be recognized tonight. God, I pray you'll continue to bless them as well. And for all those that serve and protect our great community, Lord, pray your blessings upon them. And Lord, as we go through this evening, may you be honored by everything that's said and done. And we give you all the praise and glory for it. In Christ's precious name, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, we have swearing in for our new police officers. And I would just, as you come forward, Judge Kleimer, I would just like to call them up. Daniel Kimball. John Smith. Blair Wire. Ryan Hudson.
Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, Acting City Manager Perkins. Appreciate the honor to come to you all as Chief of the Department. It's one of the great pleasures to come to you all when we're hiring new people. As you can tell, this is a good-looking group. We've worked very hard in recruiting and we're proud to present what we have tonight to each, for each one of them. The first gentleman in the uniform is Daniel Kimball. He's been with the Lexington Division of Police for the last year and a half or 18 months with them. He has a bachelor's degree in security administration. Spent about four years or so in the U.S. Army and currently is still present with the Army National Guard as a First Lieutenant. He is married and has three children. He is in uniform, as I mentioned, because he transferred from Lexington Division of Police. So that is awful appealing in law enforcement because we can put them on the street sooner. And he has the academy under his belt. So he's already been hard at work for the citizens of Paducah in the last couple of days riding with his training officer. Next to him is John P. Smith of Metropolis. John has a bachelor's degree and that from the National Labor College. Recent employer was the Honeywell Corporation in Metropolis. John is married with, is married and has four children with him tonight. Next to John is Blair Rye. Blair is a Paducah native, graduate of Citizen, excuse me, Community Christian Academy in 2009 and a graduate of University of Kentucky with a bachelor's degree in education in 2014. Blair is married with his wife that is in the audience tonight with no children. One thing about Blair is that you may recognize the last name. He is the son of former City Commissioner Jill Grott Rye, which is in the audience. Appreciate her service over the years past. Next to Blair, or I'm sorry, I'm going to jump to the outside, is Mr. Ryan Hudson. Ryan is a local resident here, graduate of Paducah Tillman High School, recent graduate of Murray State University with a criminal justice degree, bachelor's degree in criminal justice. He is a resident of Paducah, has been for several years now. One thing about Ryan, he was a 2012 intern for the Paducah Police Department and kind of showed us a little bit of what he was capable of. So we kept our eye on him until he graduated and then brought him back in. So we're glad to have Ryan also. Last and certainly not least is Carrie Naquin, Clarksville, Tennessee native by virtue of the military, correct? Arkansas is where his roots were at. He has a bachelor's degree in criminal justice administration from Columbia Southern University. He spent nine years in the U.S. Army with an honorable discharge. He is married and has one daughter that's with him here tonight. I think I saw her over there. So we're glad to have each one of these individuals and look for several long years of good work for the citizens of the Paducah community. Judge?
Do I need to be?
You go wherever you want to. You got the robe on.
And I wanted to, I wanted to know, some do. I was born in to be a Paducah police officer September 26th of 1977. Back then, police officer when you were 11 years old. It's a time-honored, longstanding oath. It includes in the oath some provisions that are obviously somewhat ancient concerning dueling with a weapon and prosecuting gamblers. Part of our history and was part of our oath. I'll read through the oath and ask you to say I do. If you'd raise your right hand, please. Do solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this commonwealth and be faithful and true to the Commonwealth of Kentucky so long as you continue as this and thereof, and that you will endeavor to the best of your ability to detect and prosecute all gamblers and others violating the laws
as Paducah police officers in the future here.
I'm not sure who's more excited, them or us.
against gaming, and that you will faithfully execute to the best of your ability the office
We're looking forward to it.
It's a happy day here in Paducah for this reason, for the beautiful weather that we're
of a police officer for the Paducah Police Department according to law, and that you
now having. It's warm outside, most of the snow's gone.
will faithfully discharge the duties of your office.
And I just want to say that I think our city Public Works Department did an amazing job
And if you do further solemnly swear and/or affirm that since adoption of the present Constitution, you being a citizen of this state have not fought a duel with deadly weapons
cleaning the snow off this year as well as the county. I think the county did a great job as well. So I would just like to congratulate all of our employees who worked so hard.
within this state nor out of it, nor have you sent or accepted a challenge to fight
It wasn't just the road crew.
a duel with deadly weapons, nor have you acted as second in carrying a challenge, nor
You know, it was all of the different departments that worked together to make us have a smoother
aided or assisted any person thus offending, so have you God.
life during a terrific snowstorm that we had.
I do if you will do that.
And even all of our utilities had to work extra hard.
All right. Congratulations.
And we do appreciate that.
Congratulations, sir.
Wanted you to know that.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir. Congratulations. You're welcome.
One more.
We have a presentation tonight. We have employee recognition for 25 years of service. So John is the Acting City Manager and I will be doing that.
Let me make a couple of comments if I could, Mayor. Mayor Commissioners, first off, I want to let you know that City Manager Peterson is en route from Nashville right now. And he wanted me to let you know he had hoped to be here, but due to flight delays, he'll join us a little bit later this evening. City Manager wanted you and our listening audience to know that the Service PIN Program was developed to formally recognize employee service and that pins are awarded in five-year increments. Tonight, we launched the Service PIN Program by recognizing a very special group of employees that have served the city of Paducah well for a very long time. On average, the group has served our community for more than 27 years, with the longest service time at 29 and a half years. These dedicated individuals make up less than 5% of our total workforce, but represent nearly 400 years of service. Those present tonight will be given their 25-year service PIN.
So as we call your name, if you'll come forward and get your recognition and your PIN. Danny Fugate. Come on, I'm real. It's a big deal. Congratulations. Congratulations. Kevin McCalips. Wendell Long. Gary Jackson. Daniel Pandoffy. Scott Bryan. Gary, now Gary was here. Angela Weeks. So we just want to thank all of these employees in their years of service to Paducah. And tonight, we have John Hodges here to do a report for us from the Paducah-McCracken County Joint Sewer Agency update.
Good afternoon. I knew that nothing would clear a room more than talking about sanitary sewers. I'm sure that's why everybody's leaving. I wanted to stop by and I stopped by the county last night and give you guys an update on where we are in our consent judgment. Obviously, our consent judgment is a legal document with Division of Water Kentucky and EPA. It's an unfunded mandate toward our sanitary sewers and our combined sewers here in Paducah-McCracken County. Funny thing about it is, we were talking a little bit about the oath about not dueling and getting gamblers and all that other stuff. And what you need to realize is, you know, the sanitary sewer system in Paducah was designed about the time that we were still having duels and we were prosecuting gamblers. And we still use it today. And when you have a system that old, the environmental standards will change and eventually they come knocking on your door to change with them. And that's where we are here in Paducah and McCracken County. This will show you, of course, JSA service area. We've got, we've got two colors up there. We have three treatment plants, Reedland Plants, the newest plant. Woodlawn is a lagoon system, which we have our own challenges there with our permit as the state changes the rules there as well. And then you've got the Paducah Plant. The Paducah Plant is our oldest plant. Didn't have treatment plants along the Ohio River until the 1950s. But you had sewers in Paducah in 1897. So what they used to do is just pipe it to the river. You know, the solution to pollution is dilution. And that was an okay environmental standard back then. They changed in the 50s when they got treatment plants up and down the Ohio River. But what we didn't do is rebuild the sewer system. The sewer system was designed back in those days to carry both your sanitary flow and your stormwater flow because it's all going to the river anyway. Why build two pipes? We're just going to build the one. And we have check dams and whatnot to prevent that flow from going to the river on a dry day. And it all goes to our treatment plant. But our treatment plant's not big enough to process all the rainwater and the stormwater that you guys have seen here the last few days. And so we do lose a little bit of that that is permitted. All that on the blue on the west, West Paducah and Lone Oak, Lone Oak used to have a treatment plant and now they're piped directly to Paducah. And all of the mall area, all of the expansion that you're really seeing in the city and the county out west, all travels through one main artery, one pipe. That's called the Perkins Creek Interceptor. And up until 2009, that was actually pumped into the combined sewer system. So you had an opportunity during a rain event to lose all that pure sanitary flow in the combined system up until we changed that. I say that to mention a little bit part of our strategy later on here. So here is the combined system and you can see the red dots are called CSO outfalls. Those are our relief points that were built in the 60s to alleviate some flooding. All of those relief points are permitted. So we have a rain event, the vast majority of the water still goes to the Paducah Plant. But you do have water that releases through those outfalls. Obviously, it's very heavily diluted, but those are permitted outfalls. Now, in the other parts of the system that aren't combined, that weren't designed to have stormwater in them, you still have problems with water leaking in because it's made out of old vitrified clay. Back then, the technology, they didn't worry about rainwater leaking in. They wanted a good chemical-resistant pipe. And that was a good chemically-resistant pipe, but it just was not good at keeping water from actually leaking in to your sewer system. So it becomes kind of like a French drain, you know? It wants to take all that water in and we battle that. And when we lose water in the separate system, it comes out of the tops of manholes instead of going through a permanent outfall. So one thing that we do in Paducah is we don't go small, we go big. And when we built the combined system, they did a really good job. And we transport a whole lot of storm flow. Back in the day, I guess that was good. Nowadays, I don't really think that's all good. I think that's bad. And if you look at the stats, which I'm sure that you guys do not because it would bore you to death, but I do, we carry a whole lot of stormwater in our combined sewer system. We're probably top three or four in the state of Kentucky. The top two, obviously, are Louisville and then a utility called SD-1, Boone, Kenton, Campbell County, south of Cincinnati. They're on a little bit different revenue perspective than we are here in Paducah. They've got a little bit more money than we do. But you can see those numbers at the bottom. Those are in million a gallon. So that's 1.4 billion and 1.798 billion that you see down there on the total. So those are, those are big numbers. Of course, with any federal or state document, we have to do all kinds of paperwork. We try to minimize that. We want to put the money that we have in the ground. But these are some of the documents that we had to turn in. The two big documents are the ones on the bottom. Your sanitary sewer overflow plan for our separate system and our long-term control plan, which is our combined sewer system center of Paducah. Now, you'll see all those documents have been submitted and/or approved with the exception of the bottom one, which is the long-term control plan. And that is our combined sewer document. We are in process of talking with EPA right now on the finalization of that document. And what that means is, we've been doing quite a bit of work, but then we'll have to start doing a little bit more work in the combined sewer system at a few of these relief One thing to note here is the federal government wants you to go fast, but what they don't do is go fast. We've turned these documents in in 2010 and here it is 2015, and they really still haven't gotten around to us until October of where we are. So obviously, being in a mandate like we are, we do spend some money in our capital projects. This just shows you kind of where we spend our money. Three main bullets when you look at it. We've done some major capacity projects. We do collection system rehab. We've got pipes in the system that are over 100 years old that had a 50-year design life. And we still use them today and we're going to use them 50 years from now. So you got to do work on those things to keep those things operating properly. We do about 1% of the system a year. We also have spent some money on direct overflow correction. Most of that money is in the combined sewer system. Some of that money was spent in the separate system to work on where we might have an overflow issue. This kind of shows you where we've done some of our rehab. We've done 40 miles, which is over 10% of our system since 2006. We focus primarily on the pipes that need the most work. We video them and we score them and we rank them. And then we go out and fix the ones that are the most problem because our first goal is to get everything from point A to point B. And that's what the rehab helps us do. The type of rehab work that we do is we line these pipes with the material and inject two parts of chemicals and we basically make plastic in the ground. And so kind of like putting a sock in there and inflating the sock and making it a hard plastic pipe. And that's what we do. It's pretty common, but pretty good bang for your buck. It's a lot cheaper than digging and replacing these sewers. One of the things I mentioned about with the capacity is the Massett Creek Interceptor is one of the big, one of the big projects that we spent a lot of our capacity money on. It was basically built in several phases. The first phase here is north of the Information Age Park. This interceptor has always been, always had an intention to be performed. And the Information Age Park was built with the main artery pipe that was necessary. What they didn't do when they built the Information Age Park is build the pump station big enough to carry the flow that would, that would result from the eventual buildout of the park. They put a pump station in there that basically is a residential pump station. It's the small one. We have the same type of pump station in Barrington Woods subdivision, which has about 40 houses in it. And so you've had a little bit of a good fortune there with some industry and some people coming in. And it was timely that we did spend that money because we needed to. If we didn't, then the pump station that was out there wasn't going to be big enough. One reason why they put that small of a pump station in there is that the main artery that serves Lone Oak and West Paducah can only take so much flow. It's only of a certain size. And that kind of plays into the second part of the interceptor that we did. You can see the pink line over there on the west is the second phase. And the reason why that was built is to help offload flow from our only main artery that we had. You can see the orange line at the top of the, of the drawing there, that's our Perkins Interceptor. And you can see where all the green lines want to funnel into it, which basically means it's a one-way show. Well, now we've got, we've got two ways to go now and we need to keep working to take flow from the orange line to the pink line. And that's some of the work that we have left to do. Some of the benefit of building that line out in the western part of the county is a lot of these private systems that are under either some sort of lifespan duress or environmental duress are able to come into the fold. They're able to petition to be part of the public system and we take them over. That has also helped us a little bit with some of our issues that we need to deal with on wet weather out there. So we go back down to the last two documents that we've talked about, the sanitary sewer plan and our long-term control plan, the strategy for our separate system, which is our sanitary sewer overflow plan. The first thing we want to do is we want to do rehabilitation. If rehabilitation will take care of issues, then that's great because that's a direct one-to-one benefit with a ratepayer dollar. The next thing we want to do, obviously, if we need to do, is capacity improvements. And a couple of those streets are out in the county, Homewood and Milliken. We finished a project recently out there. And this shows you a little bit of where we're going and what we've got to do. Gatewood Drive, we name all our pump stations by the roads. Not super technical. It's Paducah. It is what it is. So Gatewood Drive pump stations on Gatewood Drive. The problem is, is when you rename a street, we don't rename the pump station. So one day, you're going to, we've got Terrell Street and it's on Sixth Street. So I don't know what to say about that. But Gatewood Drive is one of our challenging pump stations during wet weather. It works fine during dry. We are direct-flowing that through a subdivision that wanted to come and be part of the public system as part of the Massett Creek Interceptor. We're 75% complete. We're not 100% complete because we've had 24 inches of snow and eight inches of rain the last three weeks, but we kind of have to deal with what we have to deal with there. And then the other thing we need to do capacity-wise is we need to do a project that I've termed Massette Phase Three. We need to continue to take pump stations off of the system that's feeding Perkins Creek. The blue dots that you see there are all pump stations. We have 75 of them. They're all throughout the city and the county. And I would think that we have more than the average utility. Knoxville has 120. And we have 75. And the reason why we have 75 is the lack of arteries that were built for, when the systems were built. And you've had some developer contributions, developer work, and they don't build anything bigger than what they need. And that's just something we've had to work to correct. The other thing, the last thing that you see, and if you pay attention to what's going on in the other parts of the state, which I'm sure you're not bored to death unless you're up at 2:00 in the morning cruising on the internet looking for something to make you go asleep, what we do here is storage. And it's almost like an above-ground water tank. And Louisville's having to go that route. Frankfurt's doing some of that work. We're going to have to build a couple. We're going to have to build one on Clark's River Road. That's Cook Street. Homewood and Vassar, we'll build one there. And we're going to have to build an EQ tank next to the Reedland Wastewater Treatment Plant. All that is to hold wet weather and not let it go out of a manhole. For our combined sewer strategy, the first thing that we wanted to do, and we completed that, is I made mention that the west part of the county, Lone Oak came into a pump station and was pumped directly into the combined sewer system, but we had to separate that. Basically, what we were able to do is take about a on wet weather out there. So, we go back down to the last two documents that we've talked about. The sanitary sewer plan and our long-term control plan. The strategy for our separate system, which is our sanitary sewer overflow plan. The first thing we want to do is, we want to do rehabilitation. If rehabilitation will take care of issues, then that's great, because that's a direct one-to-one benefit with a ratepayer dollar. The next thing we want to do, obviously, if we need to do, is capacity improvements. And a couple of those streets are out in the county. Homewood and Milliken, we finished a project recently out there. And this shows you a little bit of where we're going and what we've got to do. Gatewood Drive, we name all our pump stations by the roads. Not super technical. It's Paducah. It is what it is. So, Gatewood Drive pump stations on Gatewood Drive. The problem is, is when you rename a street, we don't rename the pump station. So, one day, you're gonna, we've got Terrell Street, and it's on Sixth Street. So, I don't know what to say about that. But Gatewood Drive is one of our challenging pump stations during wet weather. It works fine during dry. We are direct-flowing that through a subdivision that wanted to come and be part of the public system as part of the Massett Creek Interceptor. We're 75% complete. We're not 100% complete, because we've had 24 inches of snow and 8 inches of rain the last three weeks, but we kinda have to deal with what we have to deal with there. And then the other thing we need to do capacity-wise is, we need to do a project that I've termed Massett Phase 3. We need to continue to take pump stations off of the system that's feeding Perkins Creek. The blue dots that you see there are all pump stations. We have 75 of them. They're all throughout the city and the county. And I would think that we have more than the average utility. Knoxville has 120, and we have 75. And the reason why we have 75 is the lack of arteries that were built for, when the systems were built. And you've had some developer contributions, developer work, and they don't build anything bigger than what they need. And that's just something we've had to work to correct. The other thing, the last thing that you see, and if you pay attention to what's going on in the other parts of the state, which I'm sure you're not bored to death unless you're up at 2:00 in the morning cruising on the internet looking for something to make you go asleep, what we do here is storage. And it's almost like an above-ground water tank. And Louisville's having to go that route. Frankfurt's doing some of that work. We're gonna have to build a couple. We're gonna have to build one on Clark River Road. That's Cook Street. Homewood and Vassar will build one there. And we're gonna have to build an EQ tank next to the Reedland wastewater treatment plant. All that is to hold wet weather and not let it go out of a manhole. For our combined sewer strategy, the first thing that we wanted to do, and we completed that, as I made mention, at the west part of the county, Lone Oak came into a pump station and was pumped directly into the combined sewer system. But we had to separate that. Basically, what we were able to do is take about a third of our pollutant load off of the combined sewer system and direct pump it into the plant. We did it for $2 million, and that $2 million was all grant money. So, that was a good project for us. Then we want to separate the sewers where they're feasible. Bridge Street was a project we did in 2012 with the Highway Department, because they were gonna do some paving. And you guys, of course, know about our Wallace Park project. Wallace Park is about 45% complete. It's gonna be a $5 million job. We have more red dots on that map back there than those two. Those two are still shown there, but we've got more red dots than that. We've got nine more. And we have to come up with a plan to serve them. I've had questions about, why don't you separate all the sewers in the city of Paducah? It's because I don't have $250 to $300 million, is why we're not doing that. The city, what they did back in 1920, when they designed the sewer system, they did a good job. And they made these pipes big, and in order to build around them, you'd actually have to build two pipes for one, because you've got this pipe in the center of the street. You'd have to build on one side, you'd have to build on the other. And then you'd have to tear up all your asphalt, and your curb, and your concrete, and all of your underground utilities. And none of that was there when they built the sewers. The sewers were the very first thing that was put underground in some of these locations. The roads weren't even paved. So, what's happened is, we turned in our plan for this in September of 2010, and it sat there, because we were a number. When we first got talked to by the EPA, there's 770 communities just like Paducah. We were a number 600 and whatever. And we were given a set time to do all this work, which was a fairly ridiculous timeframe. But they don't know anything about us. They don't know what we have to do, and they've kinda worked down to a point now where they're looking at our plan. And that's good and bad. I think that's good in the fact that now we get to discuss the particulars of Paducah and McCracken County, and what we've been doing, and what we've been trying to be doing, and some of our challenges that we have. That's bad in the fact that I'm talking to EPA. I don't like doing that. But also, the hope is, is that they understand some of the challenges that we have, and we get a little bit more reasonable timeframe. Now, one thing they're not gonna let us not do is meet water quality standards. And those have changed significantly since these pipes have been built. It's just like I mentioned in the Power and Partnership, Olmsted, not Olmsted, but the Shawnee Plant has to redo their coal stacks. They work fine. They just don't meet today's environmental standards. It just is what it is. So, we met with them in October. We had provided a plan for something that I thought we could afford in the time period that they gave us, but it didn't meet what they want. We had some frank conversations that day. I had Basil Drossis, our board chairman, with me, and I had a couple of attorneys, and all kinds of folks went there with us. And they had their attorneys, and we talked about it. We've kinda come up with a schedule now, where we're going to submit them a revised plan. And I'm gonna actually meet with them the first time next week, March 19th, in Frankfurt. And the plan has to be submitted by August 1st. And our hopes is, is that we get a much more reasonable schedule, and they actually look at the challenges that Paducah has, and not just us as a number. That's yet to be determined. You're dealing with federal regulators. How that goes, I'm not yet sure. But I wanted to come in front of you guys and let you know, this is how this is going. This is not new to us. We've been doing this for almost 10 years now, and we have been planning financially for this for a long time. We've cut our staff by 20%. We don't, I don't like to spend money. I just don't. And some stuff we cut, and we have to put back, and some stuff we cut, and we can keep. And then some stuff, we have to, we get the prices raised on us. It just is what it is. But, the sewer department, sewers are very challenging, and I think Bill will agree to this, and I'll talk about this, I got ahead of myself. Let's talk about Wallace Park real quick. Wanted to give you guys an update on Wallace Park. We're 45% complete. We're all the way done with Four Circle. We're done with Jackson Street. We're going up Sycamore right now. The only thing left to do in some of the areas is to do final paving. And of course, you're gonna have a little bit of landscaping here and there that you planted in the fall and all that stuff. You're gonna have to do some of that final grade work. This is obviously one of the things that we did. I showed this to the county last night. The main thing that we're focused on with the project in Wallace Park is, we want to be good stewards of the permissions that the homeowners have given us. We're not gonna be 100%. I mean, it's a major construction project, but we're committed to getting the work done and putting the neighborhood back together again. Neighborhood's been very positive to us. They've been very patient. It's not an easy project. We're on schedule. We stopped them after Thanksgiving. Didn't want them digging holes in people's yards in between Thanksgiving and Christmas. And I wanted them to get some of the street restoration done before they moved forward. I felt like that was important, to show the residents that we're committed to doing the restoration work. So, we gave them the go-ahead to start doing some digging again, and it snowed 24 inches and rained 8 inches on us. So, we haven't really gone that far. But we are committed to getting the project done and getting the neighborhood back together. So, we talked a little bit about, I jumped the gun here, mentioned Bill with Paducah Water. What we have found, our FYI '14 sewer charge revenue has decreased 2.5% from FYO8. Every year, people are using less water. Bill's gonna shake his head and agree with that. We think it's about 2% a year. We have been able to offset that a little bit with cost-of-living adjustments, which are very minor. You're talking about 40 cents a year, maybe, on a homeowner. Sewer bills aren't that high. The City Commission and the Fiscal Court approve our rates above a consumer price urban adjustment that we do. We've tried to utilize all the grant money we possibly can. Since 2005, we've got 10.6 million, almost. And then, I think you're gonna hear the same tack from Bill later on in the commission meeting. We want to utilize low-interest loans for debt service if we have to take on debt. And I'm gonna tell you, with the costs that we're looking at, we're gonna have to take on debt. It's a no-win. You can't not take on some debt. Then I want to start taking on some of the debt now, so I can start paying it off now. And you take advantage of poor economic times where agencies like Kentucky Infrastructure Authority want to loan you money at 1.75% to 2%. It's better than being forced to float a bond and paying 3.5%. And so, we've been trying to take those opportunities. That's allowed us to use our available cash judiciously, and it's gonna allow us to have a little bit more speed and flexibility. Because after August 1st, we turned this plan in. I won't know when they'll approve it, but when they do, I'm not gonna have time to have an 18-month turnaround on a loan application with KIA. They're not gonna give me that. They're gonna make me go super fast. So, we have been preparing for that for a long, long time. We're doing a rate analysis right now, and our current rate is 443 per thousand gallons. That's the uniform rate. So, residential or commercial, they pay the same, and you pay the same no matter what your usage is, minus a minimum bill. But, there's some good news with that. Of course, I've shown this many times, but in 2014, the average, the standard by which you look at sewer rates is usually a 5,000-gallon bill. The average bill in Paducah and McCracken County is 4,500 gallons. But for 5,000 gallons, the 2012 state average is 3,368. And that's gone up. I guarantee you, it's gone up 3% or 4% a year. Right now, we are 2,215. So, we've watched our rates pretty, as well as we can, but the EPA sees that and sees upward mobility. I mean, that's just it in a nutshell. And I'm a pretty competitive guy, and I check on who our competition is, and we're gonna try to stay left side of that bar graph as much as possible. Most of those folks that you see on there are going through some of the same things that we're going through. So, we watch our people, and we watch how we spend our money, and we're committed to doing as good a job as we can do from the financial standpoint. But I wanted to come in, and the main points were to let you know about Wallace Park, that we're still pushing that job for completion, and that we are doing some work. I've talked a lot about this combined sewer stuff the last four or five years, but there's a little bit of movement there, and we think by August 1st, we're gonna have a plan turned in for them. And that is it, and you have survived it. So, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions for John? Thank you. You always do a very thorough job of explaining.
Yeah, I come in, and I'm told to be funny and short, because I wanna keep you guys entertained. But I appreciate the support. The City Commission, and Basil is here, basically, as a show of thanks, honestly, for the support that the City Commission has given us for the many years. The City Commission's been very great to work with. Appreciate all the support. Rick has been good. John Perkins, we obviously are tied with you guys a lot, and we do appreciate all that you do for us. Thank you.
Some of the best things that serve the community are underground. You can't see it.
That's right. That's right.
We do appreciate those services, I'll tell you. And thank you, Basil, for your service on the board. Carol?
And Leon Owens is...
Leon Owens is there, too. I forgot. Here, if we had a few more board members show up, we'd have a quorum, we'd have to stop.
Thank you, Leon.
Not there yet.
Okay, so, we'll go into our meeting now. City manager, do you want to...
Change of the guard.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Thank you.
We have Commissioner Abraham with our minutes.
I move that the reading of the minutes for the February 24, 2015 City Commission meeting be waived, and that the minutes of said meetings prepared by the city clerk be approved as written.
Second. Any discussion? City clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kahler?
Aye.
Under motions, Commissioner Gault, please.
I move that the following documents and bids be received and filed. Certificates of liability insurance, Wilkins Construction Company, Inc., MP Lawson Construction, LLC, Crouch Building Associates, Inc., notice of cancellation for Board of Commissioners of the City of Paducah for March 3, 2015, contracts and agreements, grant agreement with the Kentucky Department of Fish and Wildlife Resources for construction of a transient boat dock, grant agreement with the Kentucky Office of Homeland Security for an emergency generator for the Paducah Police Department, law enforcement protection program, grant agreement with the Kentucky Office of Homeland Security for body armor for the Paducah Police Department, contract with Peale and Holland Financial Group for strategic health risk advisor, strategic benefit placement services, Paducah Water Works financial highlights for a month ended January 31, 2015, bids for engineering public works department, limestone contract for 2015, 2016, One Pine Bluff, street resurfacing program for 2015, 2016, Jim Smith Contracting, LLC, equipment rental for 2015, 2016, Central Paving Company, Danny Copinson's Escavating, LLC.
City clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kahler?
Aye.
Okay, we have a resolution that I'm going to read tonight. City manager, do you want to say anything before I read it, or...
I think if you're gonna read it, it covers everything. Mayor?
Thank you. A resolution of intent of the City Commission to retain the City-County 911 Emergency Communications Center and to proceed with recommendations of the 2014 operational review. Whereas in 1991, the McCracken County Fiscal Court in the City of Paducah entered into an inter-local agreement to create and operate a local public safety answering point and a 911 emergency communication center to meet the needs of its residents for emergency services, communications, and dispatch. And whereas operational issues and budget challenges created an awareness of the need to strengthen the operation in order to ensure its long-term viability and effectiveness. And whereas in 2013, the Paducah-McCracken County Emergency Services Communications Board commissioned from a qualified consultant an independent analysis of the operations, technology, governance, facilities, and staffing of the center that involved input from board members, staff, and other stakeholders of the center. And whereas in March of 2014, the report by Allmott Associates containing a series of recommendations, including staffing models, was presented to the Paducah-McCracken County Emergency Services Communications Board, McCracken County Fiscal Court, and the City Commission. And whereas subsequent to the release of the report, the Paducah-McCracken County Emergency Services Communications Board engaged in a process to review a proposal for the Kentucky State Police to provide 911 services to Paducah-McCracken County that culminated in an appearance by representatives of the KSP before a joint meeting of the McCracken County Fiscal Court and City Commission. And whereas, following the review by the Paducah-McCracken County Emergency Services Communication Board, a presentation was made to the City Commission by Police Chief Barnhill and Fire Chief Kyle, in which concerns were expressed for the incompleteness of the cost projections of the KSP proposal, as well as for differences between the KSP proposal and the current local-based operation and the delivery of services, and the level of the inter-agency communications. And whereas, it is the belief of the City Commission that sufficient time and resources have been given to review the KSP proposal, to make the determination that the KSP proposal is not a desirable model to replace the current 911 operation. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Commission of the City of Paducah, Kentucky, Section 1, that the city supports the continuation of the 911 inter-local agreement between McCracken County Fiscal Court and the City of Paducah that created the local 911 Emergency Communications Center. And the Board of the 911 Emergency Communications Center proceed with due diligence in the further consideration and implementation of recommendations of the 2014 operational review of the 911 center. Section 2, the resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after its adoption.
Need a second?
Second. Any discussion? City clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kahler?
Aye.
Okay, we'll go on to our municipal order. Commissioner Rhodes, please.
Okay, upon the recommendation of the City Manager, the Board of Commissioners of the City of Paducah ordered that the personal changes on the attached list be approved.
Good evening, Mayor. Commissioners, we just have the single item tonight.
City clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kahler?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson, please.
I move that a municipal order entitled, "A Municipal Order Approving and Authorizing Paducah Water to Obtain Loan Assistance to Upgrade Its Drinking Water Infrastructure", be adopted.
Second.
Hi, Bill. You want to come on up?
If you don't mind.
Sure.
I don't know if I can be as entertaining as John. You know, he could've stayed and pretty much delivered what I have to say. We two watch our money very closely, and when we borrow, we only borrow from low-interest loans. We thought, since we're the new face of Paducah Water, we would both come at least, say hello. And Jason has a little bit to say about the project.
Go ahead. Thank you. Mayor, City Manager, City Commissioners, the 24-inch transmission main project is proposed to run from the existing water treatment plant to a point along the Kentucky Avenue corridor. It'll consist of a 24-inch diameter ductile iron main that's intended to enhance the capacity and reliability of water supply to the entire community. This project was identified in the capital improvements plan that Paducah Water has, and it was our intent to fund this project through the low-interest loan through the Kentucky Infrastructure Authority. We were contacted, the 1.75% was available. And, excuse me, debt service for that loan would be included through our existing rate structure, and we would not propose to increase rates associated with this project. So, this evening, we would like to request the city approval for Paducah Water to proceed through a municipal order to allow us to move forward with the loan application through KIA. Are there any questions?
No. It's much needed, so, keep the water flowing.
Absolutely.
And that will give us, right now, you just have the one line, correct?
That's correct. One primary line, and this will enhance the capacity and the reliability of that single line.
Okay. All right. City clerk?
Thank you. Thank you.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
Commissioner Abraham, please.
I move that a municipal order entitled, "A Municipal Order Authorizing the Mayor to Execute an Application and All Documents Necessary to Obtain a 2015-2016 Law Enforcement Service Fee Grant in the Amount Up to $8,114 from the Kentucky Justice Cabinet for the Paducah Police Department to Operate a One-Year DUI Enforcement Program."
Second. Chief?
Mayor Commissioners, again, this is our annual application. We support this grant each year for DUI enforcement and to get out and add extra bodies to the streets on those high-volume nights in which we think DUI offenders may be out there. There is no match required. It does run from July 1st to June 30th of '16, and covers all expenses at that point for those times that we're out there.
Okay, good. Good deal.
Thank you.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault, please.
I move that a municipal order entitled, "A Municipal Order Adopting City of Paducah, Kentucky Public Housing Agency Five-Year Plan for Fiscal Years 2015 Through 2020", and Annual Plan for Section 8 Housing Program for Fiscal Year 2015 be adopted.
Second.
Danny?
This is a plan, the five-year plan we do every five years, which schedules out the plans for the next five years, and also includes the annual plan on that one.
Any questions for Danny? You always do such a good job. We don't have to ask questions.
Thank you.
Okay, City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes, please.
Okay, I move that a municipal order entitled, "A Municipal Order Adopting Revisions of the Utility Allowances for the Section 8 Housing Program as Required by the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974" be revised, be adopted.
Second.
This is the utility allowance adjustments we do every year. One significant decrease was propane, which decreased 72% from last February. Everything else kind of stayed in balance.
So the cost of propane has decreased quite a bit?
Yes, 72%.
It's good. A lot of people in the county heat with that.
I was surprised at how big the numbers are on propane, bottled gas versus, it was a surprising number. Anyway.
All right, City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault, please. Oh, wait a minute, wrong one. Commissioner Wilson.
I move that a municipal order entitled, "A Municipal Order Adopting the City of Paducah, Kentucky Paducah Housing Agency 2015 Administrative Plan for Section 8 Housing be adopted."
Second.
Okay, on this one, we've made a couple of statutory changes that we had to include in the plan, and we're moving our inspection schedule to every two years instead of every year. Adjusted the utility calculation based on the family size instead of the unit size. And we've established a conversion voucher program. A couple of months ago, well, in January, the Jackson House opted out of a partial, some of their units at the Jackson House, 45 units. So we had to establish, we received some vouchers to help those families that were affected by the opt-out. So we had to establish a conversion voucher program for those tenants covered under the 45 opt-outs of the Jackson House. So we have included that in the plan also.
Okay.
So were those units, oh, I'm sorry, those units were part of Section 8 before, and now they're not?
They were under a different program. It's a project-based program where the assistance goes to the complex, and Jackson House prepaid the mortgage on 45 of their units. So when they opt out, HUD has to replace it with another type of assistance, which would be the Section 8 program.
So those families weren't displaced?
No, they were not displaced.
Danny, is this the part, it's been a few days since I read it, but is this the part where the waiting list is now, it was purged, and you started a new waiting list? And I believe of March 9th, people could start signing up again?
Yes, we just started taking applications this week. We opened the waiting list this week. So we've been taking applications for two days, and one more day, and then we'll go to a regular schedule every week.
Okay. And will you reach a number when it will close again? As it had been, it'd been closed for a long time.
We have been closed since November 2012. When we get to a point, probably in the neighborhood of 500 to 600 applicants on the waiting list, we will close again.
Okay. But you don't have any openings?
We will have, we do have some openings right now. That's why we're opening back up the waiting list.
Right, okay.
In the selection of who's eligible in that weighted selection, I'm sure I probably just missed it, do veterans get any, I don't know, whether you're elderly or disabled, there are different criteria, but do veterans figure in there at all?
It's very interesting that you mentioned that. We got communications from HUD last Friday that we were being invited to apply for 17 voucher, vouchers for veterans, basically, it's called a VASH program. We're in the process of applying for those. We will be working with the Marion VA Center to provide housing for homeless veterans, at least 17, in Paducah. So that is going through the process right now. And they do not have to be on the waiting list. There's a referral process from Marion. So that is coming down the line.
Right, okay, thanks.
Okay, City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Abraham, please. Ordinance is adoption.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Ratifying and Approving the Mayor's Execution of a Grant Agreement and All Documents Related thereto with the Kentucky Office of Highway Safety, a Division of the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet, for Funding for the Roadside Drug Testing Pilot Program through the Paducah Police Department." This ordinance is summarized as follows: The City of Paducah hereby ratifies and approves the mayor's execution of a grant agreement and all documents relating thereto with the Kentucky Office of Highway Safety, a Division of the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet, to accept funds in the amount of $25,000 for the roadside drug testing pilot program handled through the Paducah Police Department. The grant does not require any local cash or in-kind match.
Second. Okay. These have already been discussed, so, City Commissioner, I mean, City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Commissioner Gault, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Authorizing the Finance Director to Make Payment to Paducah Economic Development for Renovation of the Former Commerce Center Located at 401 Kentucky Avenue for Use as a Call Center for TeleTech, Inc." This ordinance is summarized as follows: The City of Paducah hereby authorizes the Finance Director to make payment to Paducah Economic Development in the amount of $75,000 for renovations to the former Commerce Center now used as a call center for TeleTech, Inc., located at 401 Kentucky Avenue. Monies for the payment will be drawn from the city's half-cent payroll tax investment fund.
Need a second?
Second, sorry.
Thank you.
Okay, City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
Ordinance is introduction. Commissioner Rhodes, please.
Okay. I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Establishing and Approving the Historic Downtown New Business Grant Program, and Authorizing the Director of Planning to Administer the Program and Provide Financial Assistance to Eligible Applicants for Relocation of Businesses to the Historic Downtown Paducah." This ordinance is summarized as follows: This ordinance authorizes the City of Paducah, Kentucky, the city, to establish the Historic Downtown New Business Grant Program, which will be utilized to accomplish the goals of the city to promote the inhabitation of vacant, unused commercial buildings located within the historic downtown by providing funds to eligible applicants for the purpose of relocating commercial business into these existing structures located within the historic downtown, and authorizing the Director of Planning to administer the new program.
Second.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioner. This is the final tool, I guess you call it, in the Main Street Toolbox. The first one was the Roof Stabilization Program, which really allowed us to actually stabilize our historic resources downtown. The second was the Upper Story Residential Program. Purpose of that is, is we want to bring residential density back downtown. A healthy downtown has lots of residents, and that's what we're trying to do. It also accomplishes something else, and that is, is as they're bringing new residences into these structures, they'll also be stabilizing the structure. This is the third one, and this is aimed at bringing new commercial activity and vacant commercial storefronts downtown. The last thing that we've accomplished within the last month is the tax moratorium. After these investments have happened, there's a five-year freeze on the assessment of five years after the actual completion of the project. So this project is to try to bring new businesses downtown into vacant storefronts.
Good.
Did you by chance win an award lightly?
Yes, yes. Melinda went to the State Main Street Conference last week, and we won an award for economic restructuring for Showcase Paducah and the economic incentives that this commission has passed. So thank you very much. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Steve.
Good job.
Thank you for your all's hard work.
I think that this is so significant. I remember early in my tenure here, hearing of the existence of what was called a fence program for these kind of things, and found out that there was only really one post in the fence, and that was, I think, was it a facade, Commissioner Gault, program, I believe. So even though there was some concept in mind for this kind of thing, there wasn't, two things were not in place. One, were the policy, and then secondly, the funding. So Steve referred to this as a toolbox, and it certainly is. It's a tremendous economic development toolbox for the community. And I attended the National League of Cities meeting here the last couple, three days, and one of the sessions was on award-winning programs in various communities around the country that there were panelists that got up and spoke about, and one of them was very, very similar to this, was a package of incentives that had been put together by the city to stimulate development in the downtown area. So we're on the cutting edge here. Good work, Steve.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And don't hide that light under a bushel. Don't hide that light under a bushel.
Okay. Commissioner Wilson?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Authorizing the Mayor to Execute a Grant Agreement and All Documents Relating thereto with the Kentucky Department of Transportation for an Enhancement Grant Award for the Development of the Greenway Trail Phase Four." This ordinance is summarized as follows: The City of Paducah hereby authorizes the mayor to execute a grant agreement and all documents relating thereto with the Kentucky Department of Transportation for 2009 Kentucky Transportation Enhancement Grant Award in the amount of $520,000 for construction of a foot trail approximately 5,760 feet long, beginning at Campbell Street and ending near Schultz Park between Madison and Monroe Streets. Local funds required to match the grant are in the amount of $130,000 and will be provided through the Boils Estate Trust Fund and a 2014 Investment Fund Transfer.
Second.
Mayor Commission, this particular grant is, again, for Phase Four, but I want to share with the, I guess, viewing audience and yourself that it's not 5,000 feet from Campbell Street to Jefferson. We're actually using a large portion of this grant to do the sidewalks and the walking trail that's on our riverfront development project. Some of the, I guess, creative financing we're doing to help this project be realized for Paducah. So this, a lot of that, I guess, linear feet of trail is within the riverfront development itself. So that's, don't want people to think it's a mile from there to Campbell Street.
Thank you, Rick. I've looked at that now, and I've thought, how in the world could that be 5,700 feet? I do have one question.
Yes, sir.
The staircases and ramps around the old showroom lounge, will this trail take, go under the showroom lounge, or use those staircases and those ramps around the old showroom?
We will not use any of the staircases around the showroom lounge. The trail itself, Commissioner, goes underneath the elevated part that's on columns of the showroom lounge to go under and through, but we do not intend on using any of that around the showroom lounge.
Is it just the condition of it, or, of course, it wouldn't be ADA compliant?
Well, part of it is ADA, part of it is the condition of it, part of it is, you know, liability, part of it, yeah.
Your way up there.
Yeah. Well, it's, I mean, we would have to bring that entire structure in compliance with all the codes associated with this, and this is also federal money. So when we're using federal money, we have to bring everything to the federal standard. We're trying, we're trying to, you know, get our trail through and not, I guess, invite too much attention to ourselves, that, take it to a new level of scrutiny that, quite frankly, we're not prepared to, I guess, pay for at this time.
Thank you. Okay, Commissioner Abraham, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Accepting the Bid of Central Paving Group, Central Paving Company for Rental of Various Equipment for the 2015-2016 Calendar Years, and Authorizing the Mayor to Execute a Contract per Same." This ordinance is summarized as follows: That the City of Paducah accepts the bid of Central Paving Company for rental of various equipment for the 2015-2016 calendar years at an hourly rates listed below, and authorizes the mayor to execute a contract per same. The contract has a one-year renewable option, ending December 31st, 2017. Upon mutual agreement by the city and Central Paving Company, the hourly rates are as follows: Tractor scraper, these are hourly rates, $65. Dump truck tandem axle, $58. Dump truck triaxle, $85. Again, these are hourly rates. Excavator, $93. Backhoe, $40. Skid steer loader, $60. Motor grader, $45. Vibratory roller, small, $28. And it's $40 for a large one. A dozer, $90. Dozer large, $95. Small paper with four-person crew, $75. Labor, $45. Landfill disposable fee per truckload, $1.
Second.
Thank you.
Rick?
Mayor Commission, this is a, one of your long-term contracts, or, when I say long-term, greater than a year, that we have periodically, for example. There'll be times that we'll need these pieces of equipment. We don't need them all the time, but under your procurement process, sometimes we might have a project, well, for example, we probably spent around $10,000 to help us do snow removal in the past two weeks with this company. And so there are times that we need equipment that we don't own, that is not advantageous to own it, but the times we need it, and this contract takes care of us during those times.
And it does say, those prices that Mr. Abraham wrote, that includes the operator?
Yes.
Fuel, the transportation, so it's not just a piece of equipment, it's the whole?
No, it's fully operated. It's fully operated for the hour. And that might look kind of odd, for example, we can't explain the rationale that the bidders use. This is actually a weighted thing. For example, the thing that we may use the most is the For example, the thing that we may use the most is excavator or bulldozer in situations, so, they carry more weight, so when they give a price, it gets multiplied by the weighted factor. So, when it gets, the extensions get put out there. Some things, like a crane, we may, we may need occasionally or something, but not as frequently. So, when they start applying their prices, it's kind of like business, it's kind of like the supply and demand. How much you use it, it will, if you use it a lot, the price will be lower. If you use it infrequently, it's not going to be very, it's going to be higher. So, the rationale they use for that is what the private sector does best.
You know, when you combine the price of the labor and the fuel, looks pretty reasonable.
That is a very good deal.
I guess we shouldn't say that too loudly.
No, that's a very, but it's competitive.
It is, yeah.
So.
Looks like.
Okay, Commissioner Gault, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance accepting the bid of Jim Smith Contracting Company, LLC, for the city of Paducah's calendar years 2015 and 2016 street resurfacing program. I ask the mayor to execute a contract for same. This ordinance is summarized as follows. Accepting the bid of Jim Smith Contracting Company, LLC, for the city of Paducah's calendar years 2015 and 2016 street resurfacing program, and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for same. The contract has a one-year renewal option ending December 31, 2017, upon mutual agreement by the city and Jim Smith Contracting Company, LLC. The unit bid prices are as follows. Bituminous surface base, $80 a ton. Milling texture, $47.50 a ton. Shoulder construction, $37 a ton.
Second.
Thank you. Rick?
Mayor Commission, again, this is another one of the similar projects, or similar contracts that we read earlier. One thing I'll share with you, just to let you know what petroleum can do to prices. For example, when I come to work here in '96, we were paying $16 a ton to mill and surface, or to mill the asphalt, that's that thing that peels the asphalt off the street, and we were paying $28 a ton for asphalt to be put down. Now, your prices are at $80 a ton for asphalt, and then some, and '46 to remove it, that is a waste material. So, you can see the difference in the price, and largely driven by petroleum.
Is it with the collapse of the petroleum market?
Well, it's the...
You sort of see some of that reflected in here from previous years?
We could, but I don't expect to see it soon.
Hasn't worked its way through?
Right.
Sticky.
The bitumen material that's used, the tacky material that's used, that's the most expensive part. It's not necessarily the aggregate that's used. We have a rich supply of those aggregates in our quarries that are just to the east of us, but it's that binding material that comes from the crude.
Do we use the recycled asphalt anywhere?
We do not. Well, I'll rephrase that. We, they can mix up to 10%, 10% to 15% of the asphalt that's peeled up and put in, but, and my conversations with Jim Smith Contracting and the asphalt supplier, it's actually more difficult to use that material because you have, the, they have gas-fired, propane gas or natural gas-fired furnaces that fire their processing. So, what they have to do, they have to get that super hot to melt that stuff down, so it mixes in well with the, I guess, virgin material. And they explained to me that, again, with the quarries we have upstream, the virgin material is much better to use because it costs less for them to produce. It costs them more money to try to recycle it because of the extra processing they have to do for it. As a matter of fact, I think, I think they may get a little bit of break if they do try to use some of the recycled material in it, but I can't speak for them.
Sometimes the correct thing to do is more expensive. Throw that out.
Especially if you want it to last for decades.
Okay, Commissioner Rhodes, please.
Okay. I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance accepting the bid of Pine Bluff Sand and Gravel Company for the sale to the city of its requirements of limestone for the 2015-2016 calendar years, and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for same. This ordinance is summarized as follows. That the city of Paducah accepts the bid of Pine Bluff Sand and Gravel Company for the sale to the city of its requirements of limestone for the 2015-2016 calendar years, and authorizes the mayor to execute a contract for same. The contract has a one-year renewal option ending December 31, 2017, upon mutual agreement by the city and Pine Bluff and Sand and Gravel. The unit prices are as follows. Number 11, bid 15, delivered, 13, pick up. Number 3's, 1425, bid, delivered, 1225, pick up. Number 57, I did miss that one time, 1425, bid, delivered, 1225, pick up. Number 68's, 1450, delivered, 1250, picked up. Number 9, 15, delivered, 13, picked up. DGA 1450, delivered, 1125, pick up. DGA pugged, 1450, delivered, 1150, pick up. Number 125, riprap, 17, delivered, $15, pick up. 8-inch riprap, $17, delivered, $15, pick up. 8-inch minus riprap, $16, delivered, $14, picked up. And quarter inch by zero, quarter minus, 1325, delivered, and 1125, picked up, and there will be a test in a minute.
Second.
Same thing, Mayor Commission, this is just the limestone materials that we use in the day-to-day operations of our street division.
Is it unusual just to have one bid on, I know a couple of these things only had one bid?
Actually, I was surprised to get only one bid on the limestone. I was not surprised to get one bid on the asphalt, because that's somewhat regional. However, on the limestone, I've learned that one thing that Pine Bluff has, actually, they can't truck the material out of Pine Bluff's quarry, it has to be barged. And so, they have an arrangement with our Riverport Authority, where they can stockpile all these materials at the Riverport, and as a matter of fact, in lieu of them delivering it to our 11th Street or 10th Street location, we actually go pick it up when we need it. And so, the other suppliers, they could not compete with the fact that we could pick it up in Paducah, three miles, three miles from our site, and they couldn't deliver it and compete with the delivery, or the pickup price. So, the others saw that and chose not to bid, but the prices only went up about a quarter, about 25 cents on some of the tonnage. If you want to compare that with the previous contract we had, 50 cents on some of the items, and maybe as much as a dollar, but it was not a substantial increase, and it was pretty much the same as it has been. So.
And once again, I just want to tell you how pleasant it was to be out and have different folks come up to me and say, I just want you to know what a great job everyone did, and be sure to pass that on.
Well, they appreciate that, they worked hard. You know, when you all get a chance and see them, thank them as well. We actually, I don't know about our city manager, parts that he's come from, I'm sure these snowfalls are routine in some places in the country.
They have a lot more equipment to work with.
Yeah, and so, but, to be faced with a 12-inch snowfall, have to deal with that.
Two in 10 days.
And then, and then come behind some warm weather and some temperatures and a lot of rain, to have people out clearing inlets, trying to make provisions for the stormwater, only to be pelted again, a week later with 12 inches again of snow. Fortunately, Mother Nature worked with us a little bit and gave us some warmer temperatures right on the backside, I will say, 48 hours on the backside, and she did decide to get a little bit cold on Friday morning. But, yes, I think your crews, your staff performed admirably, and they need to be thanked for that, you've done that, but it feels good sometimes to get that.
Great effort, great effort.
City Managers report.
I just want to echo what Rick said about the snow removal and the efforts that were made citywide to deal with that. All city departments were open throughout the ordeal, as they were during the previous event. Negotiations have opened with the American Federation of State County Municipal Employees. I think we have a very constructive atmosphere there. We anticipate smooth sailing there, and hopefully a recommendation for a contract not too far down the road. Next Tuesday night is a workshop night. Plan to come forward and share with you some work that's been done to assess various site options for city hall build in the Government Plaza. Recall that when we last met and talked about that, the commission gave the direction that they were interested in, two things. One, a new build rather than a rehabilitation, and secondly, one that would occur in the Government Center. So, I've learned a lot about the Government Center since that time, how it came about, how significant it has been in a lot of the planning and a lot of the building placements over those times. So, that helped make the site selection process a lot more straightforward, and narrowed the list of potential options, obviously. Tomorrow morning, a group of us leave for Indianapolis to meet with a consultant that's been hired for the former Executive Inn Park development. Recall that some work was done here prior to the holidays on design concepts, and this is the second stage of that, where we will try to pull together aspects of, I think there were three design concepts put together, and put together timelines and funding projections and that sort of thing to bring back before the PRDA and ultimately the City Commission for review and adoption. Hopefully, we would have something done in time to consider for this year's budget for potential appropriation, that's our goal anyway. If that doesn't provide enough time, then we'll take the time that's needed to do that. Lastly, I mentioned I attended National League of Cities. The outlook for federal funding where cities are concerned is probably more bleak than I've heard of it before in my tenure. Very much an emphasis on local self-reliance, public-private partnership to leverage resources wherever they can be. Lot of discussion about the effort to get a multi-year transportation bill together for the first time in a number of years. President has a proposal for that, that has a funding source that's a little non-traditional, and there will be a lot of discussion about that in upcoming weeks, but there's a lot of benefit to having a multi-year transportation bill. As Rick and others know, that people in his jobs, as well as those in public sector, can plan better for infrastructure improvements. It was mentioned that this country has over $600 billion in infrastructure upgrades that need to occur, so, one way or another, the country needs to get after that, and it's very interesting to hear talk about that on a federal level and on a scale of that size, obviously. And lastly, I'd like to have an executive session for two items, one, potential land purchase, land acquisition, and also economic development.
Okay. Any Commissioners' comments? Right, who has, Commissioner Wilson?
I do. You have public comments.
Public, I'm sorry, public comments, I'm sorry.
Yes, you had one turned in?
Yes, Dale Lee.
Sorry, Dale.
Mayor Kayler, City Manager, Commissioners, I came here about two months ago, and I encourage you to put a little resource here near the Boys and Girls Club on Oscar Cross. I went out probably in early March to play a little frisbee disc golf, and I saw the first hole, and I got excited, and the next time I went out, and there were the flags. And so, now it's all completed, and so, since I came personally to request that, I'd like to thank you for putting that in, that little resource. It may not mean a lot, maybe to some people, but I just got a visit from one of my young sons. He loves soccer, he loves golf, and then we went to see the disc golf courses in the area, and as I told you, I had a little bit of ulterior motive. There'll be some transportation from Nashville to this direction that I am more than excited about, and is worth millions of dollars to me, so.
Thanks.
I appreciate it very much.
You're welcome. Thank you for bringing it to us.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Ready, please?
I move that the Board go into closed session for discussion of matters pertaining to the following topics. Future sale or acquisition of a specific parcel of real estate as permitted by KRS 61.8101B, and a specific proposal by a business entity where public discussion of the subject matter would jeopardize the location, retention, expansion, or upgrading of a business entity as permitted by KRS 61.8101G.
Second.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye, and we will not be coming back. So, meeting's adjourned.